Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This is Lamoore City Council, December 4th, regular session of the city council meeting. So at this time, we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, salute.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Aaron Ash.
Let's bow our heads and close our eyes for a moment of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity once again to gather together, Father, in your presence, and we thank you that you are here amongst us, within us, and, Lord, we pray that you sensitize us to hear your voice in order that we may follow you, Father, and your will for your people in this beautiful city of Lamoore. Lord, I pray for a blessing upon our council, our mayor, and all those that are present here. And, Lord, we pray ultimately for your will to be done. We also pray for a quick and speedy recovery for our brother Neil as well. And we pray all these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people say.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Neil, I'm sorry, Councilmember Blair.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Neil.
Here.
Mayor Madrigal.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a quorum. We can do the city's business here tonight. So at this time, council, are there any items that we need to pull from their agenda? Any additions and or deletions?
I have, in the minutes, I'd like to pull, please.
Other than in the consent calendar, we can pull those at that time.
Okay.
Is there anything in the regular agenda? So we do have, I do have two items that I've been asked to pull for next, to table for next meeting, which is items 5-3 and 5-4 pulled from the agenda for discussion at our next meeting. Okay, so at this time, we will go ahead and go to...
Wait, wait. You're gonna pull items, or table items, and make a motion.
So do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion, table 5-3 and 5-4.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Brown, and a second by Mr. Neil to pull those two items, 5-3 and 5-4. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neil?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I'd also like to please make a motion to pull item 5-9 to table for the next meeting.
Clarification, council, the motion to pull the items 5-3 and 5-4, is that to move them to...
To table.
To table to the next meeting?
I'd like to also ask to table 5-9.
So there's been a motion on 5-3 and 5-4, so we'll need a motion on 5-9.
I'd like to make a motion to table 5-9 till next meeting.
So there's a motion by Ms. Blair, and a second by Mr. Neil to...
Can I ask what we're voting on? Because right now, I'm confused. Because we had an initial motion for 5-3 and 5-4, and now we're adding 5...
May I clarify, council?
Yeah.
And city clerk can correct me if I'm inaccurate. There was a motion by councilmember...
Right.
Miss, Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Neil, to table to the next council meeting, items 5-3 and 5-4. That motion has passed four to zero. Ms. Councilwoman Blair has requested that item number 5-9 be moved and motioned, that item number 5-9 be moved to the next council meeting.
Be tabled, yeah.
And table to the next council meeting. Councilmember Neil has seconded that, so the motion is on the floor.
Okay, so we can vote on that. So Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that's 5-9 will be moved to the next council meeting as well for discussion. Anything else? No? Okay. We'll go ahead and move to public comment at this time. This is the time which is reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each. So I do have some cards here for public comment, but that doesn't mean if you didn't turn in a card, you can still speak on public comment. Okay? So the first one I have here is Ms. Amy Ward.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to formally invite you all to our holiday stroll this Saturday from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM in downtown Lamoore. This year, for me, is incredibly special because we are seeing partnerships like we've never seen before. We have, obviously, the businesses in downtown. However, we also have community members such as Tim Welsh, who has volunteered his time to paint the empty storefronts so that even the storefronts that are currently vacant look holiday-ish and are well-presented for the people in downtown. In addition to that, we also have the city manager's office hosting a booth at the event. They'll be doing crafts with the kids, which is something, to be honest, I don't think I've ever seen anything like that before, and it was their idea, so I would like to thank them for that. It's pretty incredible. We also have the volunteer fire department out there with the fire truck rides. LPD will be doing cookie decorating with the kids. So this is turning out to be quite the community-involved event. So I do hope that you guys will join us. Our parade last weekend was a success. The rain stayed away just enough for us to have a really great time. So I hope you guys all have a great holiday season, and I hope I see you on Saturday.
Before you leave, can I just say one thing, please? I would like to personally thank you. I thought this year's parade was the best I've seen yet. It was incredibly large. It was full of energy. An hour into it, people were still on the streets, ready for candy and shouting, and when the band was coming through, I mean, it was electrifying. And I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I know my new events coordinator, Samantha, has been working really, really hard on this event, so that's really good feedback for me to be able to take back to her. And thank you, everybody, for participating. We had close to 80 floats, so it was a very, it was a very well-attended event. And when you're dealing with rain, you never know what's gonna happen, so we were getting a little nervous, and at 3:00, 4:00 PM, it was still kind of sprinkling a little bit. So I'm glad that it passed just long enough for us to get out there and really celebrate downtown Lamoore and what our city has to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wallashan, are you here? All right, there you are.
Change it up a little bit. Connie Wallashan, 523 C Street in Lamoore. I would like to know if it's possible to publish the agenda and the minutes earlier, earlier than five days? Because that's a lot of reading, and sometimes I have to look up information. And this time, it was like 300 pages, but what, the last meeting you guys had was 1,300 pages. So is there any way we could get that published earlier? And I have a question. It's on the, something I needed to know, if the city manager is gonna report on the status of the financial officer in your report.
No, I will not be. I will not be. I'm ready to know that.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Eman, Emmanuel Lopez Mendoza?
Hello, council. I just want to say that we had a successful food day. Two days before Thanksgiving, a lot of people went out. They got their food. We had onions, carrots, and stuff like for Thanksgiving, so we gave out over 4,000 pounds of food. So that's the fourth straight time we did it. So we're very proud of our student government and the community coming out and getting food. Also, our next one is on the 17th. You guys are more welcome to come. We encourage the community to come. We love doing what we do, you know, helping the community and making that bond even stronger. It starts, we're gonna start setting up from 8:00 to 9:00, and then the food should be ready to give out at 10:00. Also, we had the state chancellor come visit last Thursday. It was very good. We talked, he got to know students. He got to know the staff, and he shared his view on the future of community colleges and the way he wants students to keep on going. Also, I just want to wish Mr. O'Neill speedy recovery.
Thank you, sir.
That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to commend you on the blood drive that you also partook in this year, so thank you. Lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, we have a lot. Hopefully, I can have a schedule ready for you guys if you guys want to see our future events, and you guys are always welcome to come to our meetings as well. Right now, we're not gonna have meetings, but once we come back from winter break, we will continue our meetings, so.
Do you guys have a Facebook page or anything like that?
We're working on our Facebook page. We don't have access to it right now, so we're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're doing excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you. One more card from Chancellor Van Horn.
Mayor Madrigal, members of the council, city manager Olson, seasons greetings to everybody. Also, chief spin to you. It's hard to top that, one of our West Hills College Lamoore students. I'm here tonight to give you a brief update. You know, for nearly 90 years, West Hills Community College District has served the post-secondary educational needs of the residents and employers in the Central Valley. You know, at our colleges in Lamoore, Colinga, and Fireball, we take 100% of everybody in our 3,500-square-mile district, where a majority of our population lives at or below the poverty line, unemployment is higher, and skills attainment is lower. We must change that, especially here in the Central Valley, where we have 12% of the state's population, but only 6% of the state's bachelor's degree holders. The state's recent new funding formula is a step in the right direction. We have long believed that student-focused funding is a step in the right direction, particularly for our students who have faced barriers to success with additional support. It's gonna help us achieve their goals. But I wanted to spend a moment on addressing what West Hills is doing beyond that and these other equity issues. And as you may know, guided by an incredibly stable Board of Governors, a Board of Trustees, and our relentless pursuit of student success, West Hills has prided itself on being responsive, innovative, and efficient. Our structure is very different than traditional models. We fiercely advocate for the needs of all the rural communities in our district. You may know that the state has recognized West Hills with three Governors Awards for Innovation in the past four years. That is the highest number of innovation awards of any community college district in the state of California. Our innovative Reg 365 year-round scheduling system allows students to register for an entire year's worth of classes. And our partnerships with Harris Farms, Faraday, Wonderful, Chevron, and many others are moving our students from the margins to the mainstream. Our credit for prior learning innovation gives students credit for what they already know, which then shortens time to completion and reduces costs for our students. Lamoore especially, our campus here, is revolutionizing our open educational resources that saved last year our students nearly 300,000 in textbook costs. Our unique President Scholars Program funded more than 300 students this past year for their title, entire cost of attendance. We've expanded our sport teams this fall at our Lamoore campus, adding two teams. This has sparked economic impact by visiting teams who eat, shop, and stay at our local vendors. Our arena is an asset to business attraction, hosts many events, which is an economic generator for the community. And in fact, the Civic Center Act requires our arena to provide access to various groups, community-based organizations, and others. Our bonds have been financed at lower rates, which has reduced taxes for residents. We've diversified our curriculum, particularly at Lamoore, with new degrees and certificates. Our grants have opened new windows of opportunity for our students. And our increased focus on rural economic development has elevated our role as a two-year public community college in the region. We recently completed our facilities master plan processes. We've developed a new facilities master plan, and I'm going to need your support to modernize our facilities in Colinga and to build out new career tech ed instructional facilities here at Lamoore and a brand-new instructional facility. Our present focus is around reliable broadband services to rural communities throughout the valley. As you may know, broadband wireless does not exist in many parts of our district. Without broadband, there is no wireless technology. Currently, broadband infrastructure funding programs and statutes focus on population density, which automatically eliminates many of our communities in rural California. I believe we must use broadband to empower rural California, which means adding economic development funding, and we at the district are financing and supporting a multidisciplinary solution from end to end. Finally, as I wish you all seasons greetings, I have every confidence our 850 employees, anchored by excellent faculty throughout our district, believe in Lamoore and believe in our students. So again, seasons greetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? I don't have any other cards, but if someone wants to come up and speak with public comment.
Hello. My name is Shelley Reese, and I just had a couple of things that several of my coworkers and friends and family have brought to my attention that they knew that I started coming to these meetings, so I thought I would bring it up, just to find out some information. I'm sorry that my voice is a little raspy. It was brought up to me about the Uber and Lyft being denied, the people of Lamoore not being able to, I guess, offer it to the local. I was told that basically, because I have a couple of friends who do Uber and Lyft, but they have to work out of Hanford and not here in Lamoore. So I don't know what the deal is with that, but I wanted to bring it up. The reason I was saying is because I feel like if that was something that is being denied, you know, like I said, I'm not really for sure, but I thought I would ask. Because if it is, I feel like college students that maybe are using it to supplement their income or single mothers that are supplementing their income, I feel like they're kind of being denied if that's the case. If I'm incorrect, I mean, you know, I'll inform them if I am incorrect. But that was one of the things that I was asked to bring up and ask about. Another thing is...
State of Business License.
Another thing is taco trucks. There's, there's a big demand over there. I've been seeing online where different cities are having these taco truck throw downs and stuff like that, and they're a huge success. And I feel like downtown, you know, we're trying to bring so much stuff back to downtown, and I feel like that would be a really good event. It's just a recommendation. And then also, not only that, we had some years back where we had that, I want to say it was called Under the Stars or something that was held downtown, and it was a really good turnout and a really good event also. And I just feel like with coordinating everything that we're trying to bring back to downtown anymore, that it would be a really good idea. For now, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. And by the way, we did have two items in closed session, and we have nothing to report out of closed session today. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next section here, ceremonial presentations. The first one is AMVETS Post 1893, Presentation of the Care Bear Program for Emergency Services.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Lukens. I'm the District 6 Commander for AMVETS Department of California. I'm also the First Vice Commander of AMVETS Post 1893. My commander, Darren Clayton, and I are here to present the Care Bear Program. These care bears were just my... These little care bears are given to the first responders, the police department, the fire department, for kids that, you know, of probably sexual trauma or recent events of fires up north. They'll give them something to say, hey, we can hold on to, that's theirs. Post 1893 was started in 2017 in April. We had 1893 because that's when the County of Kings was incorporated. You like that? I know it's a little bit of neatness in there. AMVETS has recognized a national program in 1947, is when we were established. Out of 4,000 VSOs, there's only 43 that are chartered by Congress. We're one of those three, 43, which is pretty neat. Our membership ranges from, from the whole spectrum. If you serve honorably, you rate to be in the, you rate to be in our organization. Unlike the other VSOs, you have to have time or wartime thing of that nature. You serve honorably, you get to go with us. And we are looking for members, just saying out there. Like I said, my commander is Darren Clayton, and we're trying to get the care bears out for, whose team, sir? We got 25 for you, we got 25 for the fire department, but they are not here.
We do have representation.
Come on down. You're here. And in... Oh, great. And included in there are...
Butter fingers right there.
And included are these bracelets. You are aware 20 veterans a day commit suicide? It's over 8,040 a year. These bracelets here, sir? These bracelets here have a crisis line on there.
Very good.
All I gotta do is, if you're a veteran, know a veteran, dial the number and press 1, and you get in contact with somebody right away.
Wow.
We have other programs. We help out homeless veterans. We have Wilted Home Program. Where Commander Clayton and I were on a few of them. And see, Marines, we don't cry. This one gentleman, that was pollen in the air twice, so I had to leave the room twice, because, I mean, he was just happy, I mean, he was on the street for 18 months. Vietnam veteran. And the worst part about it was, he's like, he sat on his couch, he's like, with his dogs, like, I'm finally home. I'm like, okay, I'm, I'm leaving. But we do things like that. We also have 93 bills to help veterans better, our lives in California. And 34 of them are on the governor's desk. Last time we checked, there was only four that were vetoed. So we are trying to be as active as we can in the county. And the other thing is, this coming January, we will have the only junior AMVETS program in the state of California. And as for sons and daughters of veterans, you get this 517. We have another program called Americanism. That's where we get kids from kindergarten all the way to high school. Oh, you'll like this one. From kindergarten, first grade, all they do is they cover, they color the flag, answer five questions, and it's judged locally. If, what was it, bigger posts, they pay money for the kids for local gift cards, then it goes to state level. They win money state level, and if it goes to national, they win, win state level as well. Then the second graders to fifth graders, they create a poster, nine by 12, same thing. It gets graded locally, state, then it goes to nationals. And sixth grade all the way up, they write essays. Now, the essay winner for the ninth grade, that goes to Valley Forge for a four-day experience. It's all, it's all paid, and they have chapel rooms. This gentleman was lucky enough to go, which everybody has went, has never, they've never had a bad time. You learn about the Constitution, you see where Valley Forge, they camped out. It's really an experience, but that's why we're here. They actually take the ninth graders into one Superior Courts in Philadelphia, and they go over a Supreme Court case that the Supreme Court hasn't even heard yet. They deliberate based on the Constitution, come up with a decision, and when the Supreme Court actually sees it, they see if their decision actually matches what the Supreme Court came up with. For the school.
Yes. This was established right after the war, World War II?
World War II.
Yeah, okay.
World War II, vets coming back, and they needed, they wanted to get together on their own, help each other out. So we are based on veterans helping veterans. We also help the veteran's family. We also help the veteran's community, where the better the community has, the better life is for the better.
Awesome.
Because we're the only AMVETS post in Kings County. We're a county post, which means we can react to anything in the county.
I am so excited to see you guys form as a county organization. I remember you guys back, I wanted to, I remember you guys back in 2013, and there was still up in the air whether or not you'd get in the county as an organization or not. And I have seen Mr. Clayton at just about every veterans event possible in the county, if not, outside the county, if not more, events. And I'm so thrilled that you were able to make this post happen and that it's gaining traction. And I just can't say enough good things about your service. Thank you, sir.
It took him about two years of headaches and his wife yelling at him to get it all taken care of.
Oh, I remember. I remember a few headaches you had there with that.
And we also have writers program. My wife is part of the auxiliary for 1893.
Yeah. Take a bow.
Yes. But yeah, we are here for the veterans and the community. If you all need us, you have the commander's card, we're here with the flag. And we'll have more information on it later on, but March 2nd, we're planning on bringing Martin Ross to Lamoore.
Really?
Awesome.
Yes, we are.
Crawfish gumbo, okay.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
We talked about it. An hour later, he actually bought one of the crab pot, the boil pot. He bought that an hour later. I'm like, you gotta have that ready.
Oh, yeah. I was out there for about 12 years. All right.
Any more questions?
Can we get these police and fire together with you guys for a quick photo op?
Yes. Holding a teddy bear?
That's awesome.
I'll hold the teddy bear. Makes me look bigger. Where do you want us at?
Where do you want to stand? You got a bear in your hand?
I like the bear too.
You are a big bear.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, this needs to go to where it's intended to go. I appreciate it, but that needs to go to a child's meet, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next time, next item is Kings County Association of Governments for exemplary service. Ms. Spear?
Okay, I'm the alternate on Kings County Association of Governments, and I attended the last meeting, but Mayor Ray Madigal, he was the primary on that. And so, the chair and the executive director, the chair, Joe Nev, was the chair, and the executive director, Terry King, asked me to present this to Mayor Madigal. I'm just going to read it up here because I can speak into mic. But it states, "Resolution of appreciation for Kings County Association of Governments." Whereas Ray Madigal has represented the city of Lamoore on Kings County Association of Governments Commission from January 2017 through December 2018, serving as vice chair during his term. And whereas Ray Madigal represented the city of Lamoore on the Kings County Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Service Authority from January 2017 through December 2018, has served as vice chair during his term. And whereas Ray Madigal served as a principal representative on the Valley Regional Policy Council. And whereas Ray Madigal has provided valuable guidance to KCAG staff on significant work programs, including the 2018 update of the regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy, and as a commissioner was responsible for the approval and distribution of millions of transportation dollars for local road and transit projects within Kings County. Therefore, let it be resolved that on the 20th day, November 2018, the Kings County Association of Governments Commission acknowledges Ray Madigal's dedication and commitment to public service. So they asked me to present this and give them the infamous Kings County cow hat. But on behalf of the KCAG, thank you very much for your service. Take a picture and send it to... Don't say cheese, say moo.
Is that good? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go to... Okay, let's go to Section Two, Department and City Manager Reports.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We'll start out tonight with Chief Daryl Smith.
Good evening, council. Two events to report out, and hopefully you'll have the opportunity to attend them. The first one is our Reason for the Season event, which will take place on December 14 at 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Civic Auditorium. So this is the event where we partner with Lemoore Christian Aid, and we reach out and we impact around 200, 250 families each year, providing food and presents for families in need. So we're pretty proud of that event and hoping to get people from the public show up to help us out. The next event will be on December 20th, and will start at 1:00 p.m. That's our annual presence on patrol. And if you haven't been on that event or experienced that, it's pretty unique. We caravan to many houses in our community, and we provide presents to children of need. So another event that I'm very proud of, and you're all invited, if you want to show up for lunch, we do, we know how to eat at the PD. It's not just fire that know how to eat, we know how to eat too. It's funny though, because when we ask people to sign up for rides in police cars, they don't come out. But when they sign up for rides in fire trucks, they show up in force, right? There's a difference, apparently. But anyway, we like to see you out there for both events, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Jason Glay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Few events to report out this week. On Friday, the Recreation is hosting Suites with Seniors at the Civic. It's Friday at 8:00 a.m. Everyone's invited. It's a free breakfast, get to hang out with seniors in our community. On Saturday morning, there's a skate competition at Rotary Park. It's hosted by Tim Welsh. That event's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also on Saturday is a community Christmas dinner. It's going to be at the CMC. There's going to be takeout orders, I believe, from 1:00 to 3:00. And it's going to be open to the general public if you want to sit down and have a dinner from 5:00 to 8:00. Also, something else to report on, internally, we've been meeting about Friday night music. I'm happy to report, we met today with Friday night music, and we're going to turn Friday night music into a Lemoore recreation program. We're still working out the details. The start date is going to be Friday, January 11th, 2019. It's going to be at the Vets Hall from 5:30 to 9:30. We're excited to help out with this event and excited to work with the folks with Friday night music. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Rivera?
No, not right now, Mrs. Savage. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Just want to briefly update you on our water treatment project. Last week, we met for the third round of our review committee, staff along with our consultants at Agent Corolo, spent a day and a half going over site plan layouts, flow diagrams, final electrical circuitry. So things are moving along fairly well, so we hope to be completing this aspect of the project here soon, so everything's going well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any other?
That's it for department reports, thank you.
I have a question, and I don't know if it would be under department report or a question to you, but it was just the work that's being done on Boroughwood, if that is city or if that's PG union, if that work's completed yet. Because I know the rains had some of it halted for a while, and I just wanted to know an update.
I'm not familiar with the work on Boroughwood. Frank, do you know?
I believe it's either AT&amp;T or PG doing the work.
Okay. And are you aware of if it's complete or not? It rained, so I know there was a pause for a while.
I do, by the last week, they were still, I think, doing boring.
Okay.
And so, I think the rain probably slowed them down, but I think it's about, they got to repeat a telephone line.
Okay, thank you.
So just for you, Ms. Savage, we're going to reopen public comment, okay? Just for you, because you're special to us. Because I know I'm going to hear it no matter what, so I was going to just say it to everybody.
Now, everybody listen. In case you don't know what Friday night music is all about, a bunch of seniors, well, not just seniors, people would meet at the Lemoore Senior Center every Friday night. We had musicians that would come from Fresno, Kingsburg, all over, Kettleman City, every single Friday and play for free. And anybody that wanted to was welcome to attend, no charge. There will be no, but anyway. So it's, I tell people when they come in, you're strangers now, but when you leave, you're going to feel like family. It's just like having a family reunion. We all get together, we don't drink, we don't cuss, we don't hassle a neighbor and bump the tables over. Very nice people, if you like nice people. So anyway, that's what it's all about, and we will be starting up. Thank you, Jason, so much, and Dave, for helping us. We will be starting up again January 11th at...
Five thirty.
So we'd like to see you there. Let me tell you, you will enjoy it. If you can sing or play, get up and do it. We're happy to have you more than mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to our agenda. All right, so now we're on Consent Calendar, Section Three. So council, are there any items that you wish to pull from the consent calendar for further discussion?
Three dash one, please. I have a comment about the minutes. Yes.
I have a question. I don't know if I have to address Nathan with it or you with it, with the consent calendar.
On an item, if you want to talk about it, you have to pull it.
Okay, it has to do with the warrant register. Why ain't the warrant registered with the consent counter?
It's not in there.
It's not on the consent counter, so council comments is appropriate time to do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so so far, the only item we have to pull in is item three dash one, is that correct? Is there any others? Ms. Washin, three dash five, correct? Okay, so, three dash one, three dash five will be pulled for further discussion. Other than those two, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I motion to approve three dash one, three dash five.
No, no, no. The remainder of the consent calendar.
The remainder.
Okay.
Three, three, and three, four.
I motion to approve three, three, and three, four.
And three, two.
Three, 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 two?
Three, two.
Three, two, three, 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 four. I think we got it this time, guys.
Okay, so there is a motion by Mr. Neal. And a second by Mr. Brown to approve consent calendar items three dash two, three dash three, and three dash four. Okay. Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Those items are passed, thank you. So now we will go to item three dash one for discussion, the minutes.
Yes, I just wanted to note on the minutes that it was made, a comment was made that I made slanderous comments, which is an allegation. I did not, and if you're going to put that, you cannot put that as the council stating that, you need to put, in your opinion, the council member who states that. I have no problem with it being a record of opinion. I do have a problem with being accused of a crime that I did not commit on a public document. So I would please suggest rephrasing that.
That will be noted.
Thank you.
Also, in the Department and City Manager Reports, which is Section Two dash one, I have two corrections to make. In the second paragraph, it says Public Works Director Rivera stated the water. It should be the water treatment design camp. And in the third one, it should be stated, City Manager Olson stated there will be two lighted crosswalks. So we're adding treatment and lighted. Those are both corrections.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve item three dash one with the recommended items to be amended.
With the noted changes. Do we have that?
Because the city clerk has to go back and review the tapes with regards to item number six dash one. I would recommend you table this item to the next meeting and approve them at the next meeting.
All right, I'll make a motion to table item three dash one to the next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Neal to table item three dash one, which is the minutes for November 6th, 2018 meeting. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, thank you. So that will be tabled till the next meeting. Item three dash five, Approval Signature Cards Resolution 2018-49.
Ms. Washin, I don't know what her question is.
Apologies, I needed to find the staff report. One of the reasons this resolution is brought before you is because we are required to have two signatures on the bank card in order for paychecks to be processed. At this time, we only have one person on the signature card, which would be Mayor Ray Madrigal. So this resolution would need to be passed in order to have the requirement of that second signature. It is suggested that we have the City Manager Olson and Assistant City Manager Spear as signatures on there as well, in order to be in compliance.
Any questions?
So the resolution for the approval would have both City Manager and Assistant City Manager listed. Is that correct? Okay.
Along with the...
And the mayor.
And the mayor. But this is the, this is to basically add, not just the mayor, now add also two other signatories, which would be the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager, because right now, it's only one person that's on that card, correct?
Correct, yes. So we're adding two others, so we'll have a total of three. And it may come before you again in order to add another one. However, this is one in order to be in compliance, we're bringing it before you.
Any other questions? Public comment?
I'm wondering why the Finance Director is not on the signature card, and is there a conflict of interest be having the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager as signatories on this, on this signature card?
You guys want me to answer?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Without researching the matter, I would, I don't know of any facts that would lead me to think there's a conflict of interest in that they're acting in their official capacities and not their personal capacities. I don't know of any facts that would create a financial conflict with them acting in the professional capacity at this time.
Okay, and so the Finance Director is not, we don't have a Finance Director, because I heard that she had been fired.
I can confirm that the Finance Director is no longer employed with the City of Lemoore.
Okay, I know that's a personnel matter, but I was told that she was, she was told that she was let go because she was, she did not fit in with the Lemoore, the Lemoore something community. And that's what I heard. And I heard that from somebody who was very close to her. So, you know, Finance Director is a big deal. And she was, I thought she actually should have gotten a raise because of all of the trying to, trying to find money, you know. I'm sure she was tired of robbing Peter to pay Paul because of all of the stuff that she had to come up with. And I, you know, so, and then when I heard that, I was very, very disappointed.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Moving back to council.
Make a motion to approve three, five, as written.
Second? I guess we'll just die for lack of a second.
Can you second it?
I would second it.
Can I make a, can I, can I, because I can, I can gather why there's not going to be a second right now. Might I suggest we table this for the next meeting? And in the resolution, make a very clear outline of who would be added to the cards, because I think that the issue is likely the...
Uncertainty. Can we take a five-minute recess so I can get some facts on this matter?
Okay.
I agree.
We'll take a five-minute recess.